I'm sorry, lead us in. The invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, this Christmas season is a wonderful season and we appreciate and enjoy the many blessings that you have provided for us. We thank you that we can gather together tonight to meet and do business for the city, pray that you would grant us wisdom in the decisions to be made. Again, bring us the joy of this season and pray that you would cast your blessing on us here now tonight, in Jesus' name, amen.
Like allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to three public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30, December 18th, 2023. We'll call this meeting the Ferguson Falls City Council Board. Roll call, please. Here.
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 And we have a quorum. First item of business this evening is approval of the agenda and we'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth. Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening. Good evening, Your Honor. Yes, we do have one addition to the agenda this evening under old business and that's a golf course contract update. Councilmember Hicks and Councilmember Kwame have been appointed to that committee and they're going to report back this evening on how those discussions are going. And then Councilmember Hicks has requested item number three to be removed from consent for additional discussion.
With that, I would entertain a motion approving the agenda as amended.
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thanks, Anthony. Thanks, Tom. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. That motion carries. We have no public hearings this evening under bidding of awards. We have one bid that would be a resolution for consideration pertaining to the construction of services, Ferguson Asphalt Paving, in the amount of $1,158,807. And we'll call on our city engineer, Brian Yvaro.
Thank you and good evening, Your Honor and council members. Back on October 26th, we received three bids for this project. They were publicly opened and read aloud. A little bidder at the time was Ferguson Asphalt and Paving with a low bid amount of $1,158,807.60. The engineer's estimate of the cost was about $1.4 million. Since then, I understand engineering and myself have evaluated the bids and believe Ferguson's bid to be in order. If you recall, the project work scope consists of a resurfacing maintenance project, some base patching and ADA improvements. This is just very similar to the Lincoln Avenue, Lincoln and Union project currently in the punchless phase as we speak. This should be done under live traffic, so no detour will be needed. I have an exhibit showing the project limits. The project limits, once again, are Broadway Avenue from Lincoln to Fer and then Randolph Avenue from Fryburg to Springan Avenue. So if awarded and all end-up approvals are met, I will arrange for a pre-construction meeting. It's not known when this will be, but I must likely the pre-construction will happen this spring. I just wanted to note Randolph with interim completion date will be completed while school is out for session in the summer. So, once we have all this information, we'll be disseminating this information to the local residents and the general public. Moving on to the budget, this is a federal aid project. Eighty percent is funded for the construction only, therefore the remaining twenty percent construction and all other admin engineering costs are through state aid. So I'm estimating the total project cost of $1,625,017.28 and this would be fully funded with the federal aid share and state aid construction and maintenance funds. So at this time is when I'm requesting, Your Honor, is to award the construction services contract to Ferguson Asphalt and Paving in an amount of $1,158,807.60 and this is contingent on receiving all remaining state approvals. So I'll open up any questions you may have.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. We can award that contract through a resolution if someone would like to offer that.
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thanks, Anthony. Questions?
I have a question. And just so we know, will there be any assessments to, you know, property owners on this project?
No. No, this is all funded through state aid.
So the people on Broadway will get a new road without it costing them?
A resurfaced road.
A resurfaced road. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian? Yeah, Scott.
When we have projects like this that come along where it's entirely state or federally funded, the process to get that, you know, so we didn't go out and decide that we're going to fix this road as a city, but we've got a, somebody had to make an application or go through a process to get this million dollars. Is that something that you do or do you get something sent to you from the federal saying, what projects have you got, fill in the blank? I was just curious generally how that process works.
Yeah, in general, this is the State Transportation Improvement Program, so these are federal funds allocated through District Four. And as city engineers amongst District Four, we meet annually and we have a ranking system who receives these funds. And at this time, Ferguson Falls, it would be ranked high in priority for receipt of the funds, so therefore it was given to the city. If we don't take these funds, it moves on to another city within the district as well. So it's a lot of conversation, negotiations, but yes, these federal funds come from.
Looks like you've done good work in this case.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any other questions? There's a resolution to award this contract to Ferguson Asphalt Paving. On roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Brian. Moving along to the portion of petitions, communications, and open forum. We'll open floor to the open forum tonight. Anyone wishing to speak to the council on any topic that's not on the agenda is welcome to do so at this time. Seeing no one, we will move along and close that portion of our meeting. To the consent agenda, there are three items. Anthony's asked for the third item to be removed, leaving two, so we can accomplish those two items through a resolution. If someone would like to offer that, items number one and two. Brent, thank you. Tom, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Item number three, a resolution approving 2024 transportation agreement with productive alternatives. Productive alternatives? Pardon me, Anthony?
Yeah, the reason I asked to kind of pull this was obviously that it's a, we're looking to sign a five-year agreement with them and obviously we pay them $50,000 per year as support. And it obviously says that an agreement shall automatically terminate if the city does not allocate for these services in its annual budget. I just want, like, to draw people's attention basically to that paragraph that is everybody kind of happy with it, that we're signing a five-year agreement and we're obviously allocating $50,000 a year and then obviously can terminate if the tax levy committee and the council decide that we're not going to allocate the $50,000. And is that, is that, is it clear that we can do that if we don't allocate the money? And I was looking probably for Ralp's interpretation, that if we don't, you know, are we liable in any other way?
No.
I mean, that's the short answer. Basically, it's the contracts written to allow the city to defund this if that's what you choose.
Yep.
And just for a bit of background, like, this year we did, we invited their leadership in and we talked to them about the services they're providing. The tax levy, met with them for a good hour, hour and a half and talked about services and how, that is, that is part of the process that the tax levy committee undertakes. Jim and then Laura, yeah?
Back a number of years ago, before them, we had a senior bus and we gave them $50,000 a year. So that $50,000 has been there for a long time, it's never increased.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Laura?
I just wanted to clarify, it talks about defunding them, but what about if we want to change the amount of funding?
You can go up.
Okay.
And the agreement allows for that.
But we cannot go down?
Well, I mean, I think if you were going to go down, I think there would be more to talk about.
Okay.
But, you know, if you wanted to go and eliminate it and then renegotiate it, you could do that.
Okay.
Scott.
On page one of the recitals in the transportation agreement, it says that there's grant funds available. It says DOT has grant funds available for the operator to provide the services. So does that, would there be grant money available to the city then to cover this $50,000 or does that go directly to them? But I don't understand, if we're funding them $50,000, then where's the, what's that got to do with grant money available to them? So that's fuzzy.
Their budget is much more than $50,000.
Oh, certainly.
It's, yeah, it's. Yeah, Councilmember Mayor, Councilmember Kwame, the DOT funds go directly to them. They use this $50,000 as part of the match required for those funds. That's why they call it out in here, is they're actually leveraging these dollars to get more dollars for their organization.
Yeah, that match is what I remembered hearing of in the past and hadn't heard any discussion about that in this case. So if we were to not provide this, then they wouldn't be qualified, or they wouldn't be eligible for any matching funds through those programs. So this is a way to really get a pretty good bang for the buck.
That's how I understand it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So with that.
With that, I make the resolution.
Thank you, Anthony. Second, Jim? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight we have six items for consideration. The first being acceptance of a $20,000 donation to the Ferguson Falls Public Library from the Porter Family Fund. Gail, did you have anything to, anything to add or anything you wanted to mention to this?
Thank you for the opportunity. Mayor Shire and councilpeople, yeah, thank you. We, the library is occasionally the recipient of really generous gifts from our community. We're really grateful for the opportunities that these gifts provide us. And at this time, we, we are planning to use these funds, we're planning to set them aside for future technology needs that we anticipate coming down the lines.
And that's the Dorothy and Jean Porter family, I assume?
Yes.
And we recently lost Dorothy, so condolences to her family, but thank you to them for this generous gift to the library.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Thank you, Gail. And we can accept that generous gift through a resolution? Jim?
I'll offer the resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Item number two is a resolution approving a conditional use permit with conditions, allowing a home birth midwifery practice at an R2 residential zone located at 124 West Oriole Drive as recommended by the Planning Commission. We'll call on our community development manager, Claire Beck. Good evening, Claire.
Good evening, councilmembers. Good to see you again. This was a case that was heard in front of a special session of the Planning Commission back on December 5th. There was a long meeting, about two hours of back and forth with the commission and with members of the residential neighborhood who were here and then also the applicant. So lots of questions got asked, lots of questions got answered, and the Planning Commission ended the discussion with a decision to pass on to City Council an acceptance of the conditional use permit with, with conditions in place. One of the conditions would be that they would follow all of the rules and regulations of the city and maintain proper permitting, et cetera. The other condition would be to provide five off-street parking spots for their visitors and for their staff members. So the concerns that were brought forward from the neighborhood during the public hearing component of the meeting were mostly around parking and the traffic that could come from a use like this. The building itself has never been a single-family home, it's always been some kind of a clinical use, either a long-term care center or a group home. So it's never been a single-family home, it's always had one of these commercial uses. So the traffic patterns would remain similar in nature to what the traffic patterns were with those former uses. The Planning Commission at the meeting did not hear compelling testimony necessarily that they, that the building would be unsafe in the neighborhood with its use and the traffic patterns that would come from it. That's why they decided to pass it along to City Council for further discussion and possible approval. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, Claire, I have a couple of questions. First, I believe that there's been some discussion amongst Planning Commission members since that meeting to include, there was a fence discussion, we should, that we should
Yep, screening.
Consider including a fence requirement along the driveway between the property?
Lynn, can you zoom in a little bit? So the building itself, the, yeah, that'll, that'll work. So there's an existing driveway there. The property line runs kind of diagonally between the subject property and then a neighboring property. So the idea would be, and this is something that's going to get explored, but the idea would be that the driveway pad could be expanded to hit close to that property line. The neighbor in question has said that she's not opposed to the use of the building, but she would like there to be some sort of screening in place between her property and then the cement pad that could be expanded there. So maybe some sort of a fence or some bush screening, something similar to that.
So that should be an additional condition that the council should consider?
Yep, council, council may add that as a condition.
The other one was signage and lighting of the signage, is that another consideration?
They will, they will, yep, the applicant, should the CUP go through, they would be placing signage on the building, they would have to adhere to city rules about signage. In this case, it could go kind of two different ways. We have signage in a residential area which can be up to two feet by two feet, but it's also a clinical use and so our code does allow for a larger sign for clinical use, so I would maybe leave that up to the council to decide how large of a sign you'd be willing to see there.
So there's contradiction in our code, is what you're saying?
Not necessarily contradiction, it's just it could be taken as either it's a residential area or it's this clinical use, I think, depending on how you'd like to interpret it, you could do it either way.
Okay, thank you, Claire. And we'll, so I think there's people here who want to speak to this, but for the, for the time being, let's, let's, let's open it up for discussion if council has any questions and then we'll, if not, we'll open it up to the public and then we'll bring it back for any action from the council. Sound fair? So at this time, if anyone wants to speak to this issue, you're welcome to do so. Please.
Hi, my name is Wendy Metcalf and I live directly across the street from this building. I've had lots of concerns with this property because I have lived here for over 30 years. When the building.
Wendy, would you bring that microphone?
I'm sure, can you hear me now?
Thank you, yes.
When they were going to build this originally as neighbors and Mariana is the right next door, we live across the street, and there were at least two other families that had questions about this building because, first of all, it's way too big for the lot that it sits on. I know, I asked questions at the time, what the ordinances were for the city, and they were supposed to have 25% of their property as a backyard. Well, if you look at that picture, there's absolutely no backyard. One of the requirements, what we were going to ask for is to have it surveyed so that you actually know where that line is, because when you're going to start putting in more cement, which I think is wrong too, but again, we don't have an ordinance against impervious surfaces, I understand. So when it comes to surveying to see where that property line actually is, from what I've been told, is that the corner of this building actually goes, not necessarily over the line, but there is a setback to property lines, and I believe at that time I was told it was three feet. The fact that when I asked if there were conditional use permits or variances that permitted that to be built, nobody can find the records. So it was wrong. We voiced our opinions at that time and the next thing we knew, there's a big, huge building being built. It was for assisted living, so we were told it was residential, that there is nothing you can do because it's residential in a residential area. But through the years, we have put up with cars at the time, though, and it's never been a group home. It's always been an assisted living for either elderly or handicapped people. People could bring their cars there and if you know older people don't usually drive their cars, so they sat on the street and the snowplows would come through and so we'd have piles of snow. Well, then towards the last, they were not allowed to have cars there, so that issue kind of went away. But you had people visiting the people that lived there. We had, in this case, we had ambulances there that came. We had funeral home vans that picked up people that were deceased. We had care vans that picked up people to take them and bring them back home from appointments. We had utter express buses that would come and pick people up and drop people off. We have delivery vehicles and we have the people, the employees that work there. At one point, we had an employee across the street that would start their car at 10:00 to 11:00 at night with a bad muffler. We sat and listened to 10 minutes of a car warming up. Well, we could tell it was 11 o'clock shift time because of the noise. I don't think it's right to keep allowing this to be a business because I don't think it was, at the time, it went against a lot of ordinances that the city had, but it got to be built anyway. So how do you make something that was wrong in the first place? How do you make it right if you just keep allowing businesses to be in a residential area? And then we also complained about garbage because it was a business, so it had more garbage. And at one time, we came home from a vacation and we had those big round garbage cans on the boulevard. Well, you don't move those up and down, there's a, it's an incline. So when you get a garbage can like that, it has to sit on the boulevard. We have ordinance, I believe, that say your garbage comes to the street the night before the garbage pickup and it goes back up to the house, the side of the house or in a garage. So there is no garage for this. The garbage cans have to sit out. So when they're going to bring all these extra cars up into that parking area, they still have to remember, right now, there's four garbage cans that sit there. So that takes up some of the space when they say they're going to get put four to five cars in that little area. And, and I would bring up the fact that if you put all your employee cars in there and all your, excuse me, your patients' cars, and then you have an emergency situation, the ambulance can't even back up to go to the door to get somebody that really needs to get to a hospital. And I don't, I don't know, you get everybody to move their cars so you can bring an ambulance in there? I have no idea what they plan on doing. And so there's issues like that that, that just bother me because I don't know what kind of variances they had to get to be able to build it in the first place, but does it make it right? The fact that it's not suitable anymore for assisted living, from what I understand, because of regulations with the state of Minnesota, it's not cost-effective to be used as an assisted living. And so the fact that they're trying to put all these cars in the parking lot, I've seen pictures, well, just yesterday, they had five cars pull up in the driveway so that you could see, there's the approach that has the sidewalk and the approach that goes to the street. That's not allowable parking spot, so if they were going to use that for parking, I don't see how that's acceptable. So I guess, I don't know, I can say, it should have never been built in the first place, but what do you do? Because it is a unique building and I don't know how many of you have ever gone up in that area and actually looked at it. The one other thing that I was questioning, I guess, was when they applied for the conditional use permit, they stated in there that it was going to be used Monday through Thursday for appointments to visit with patients and, and aftercare and whatever goes along with having a baby. And then in the minutes from the Planning Commission, they're saying that their other business that they have is going to be used for these appointments. So I'm confused because is the building going to be used to actually see the, the mother before she gives birth? So it would be like a doctor's office? Or is it only going to be for birthing? And at what point does it become that? I guess I'm not sure. Because if there is no appointments at that building, it takes away a lot of the parking issues because you're not going to have hourly patients coming and going from Monday through Thursday? So I don't know, I guess that's a question to me, is what, what is this business going to be? Is it just birthing or is it appointments to see the patients? And then I just have one little tidbit because this is, I'm sure there's realtors in here, but when they advertise this building, they're advertising as business. So bed and breakfast, they say that it could be, what do you call it, a vacation VRBO, that type of thing. Well, there's eight bedrooms. So if you rented it out for your family for a Christmas vacation and you brought 50 people there to stay in there, where do they all park? No, those are my concerns. If this doesn't go, it shouldn't be a business. So that, I don't know. You guys have to answer those questions for me. But I've lived there and so I, I've seen it and I know what it's about and I, I just worry too about the value of my home. Because if I had a business coming, if, well, if one of you lived in my home and a business shows up and I'm trying to sell my home and there's 15 cars parked in front of my house because there's patients back and forth, there's babies being born, an ambulance shows up to take the baby and the mother to the hospital, what does that do to the value of my home? So, any questions for me? I don't know, but.
Well, thanks, Wendy. We'll, we'll let the applicant speak and hopefully she can answer some of those questions. I would just say, I agree with you, I think the process, whatever process that it went through when it was originally built was not right. We can acknowledge that. The research that I've done, there's no record that I can, that we can find and it's unfortunate. That being said, you know, it's built.
Right.
It's there, has been, and so I think that from my perspective, it's the matter of finding the most reasonable conditions that can be met for the neighborhood. It's not a perfect outcome, of course, but I think that's where we're at. But let's let the applicant address the council and then we can open it back up to the public or the council can have some questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Wendy. And just one clarification, just for my, so the way I. Just one second here, Brent. The, so healthcare uses are permitted as conditional use in R1 and R2 zones, correct?
It's permitted by use without conditional use in R1 and with conditional use in R2.
And this is an R2?
This is an R2 zone.
Okay. Of course, that doesn't address the issues of property lines and size and pervious, there's other things, but, but a healthcare use is permitted in this zone with, assuming that it meets reasonable conditional uses.
Correct.
That's good. Ann, correct?
Yes.
Do you like to address the council?
Yes, I will. Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for having me. I'd like to start off by saying I empathize with you, Wendy, in terms of like the neighborhood, right? Like 20 years ago, a property was built in a residential area and unfortunately, at that time, you were probably told that it would be only one thing and one thing only. And now here we are today trying to find the best solution for what the property could be used as. The property has eight bedrooms and nine bathrooms in it. It currently sits on a slab and as you can see with the lot lines, there is not room to build a garage. So for a single-family home and buyer to come in would be probably very challenging at the price point that the seller is asking and then to convert it back into a single-family resident home. So I wish that person was out there for you, but I don't know if they exist. So like you said, my name is Ann Hints, I'm the owner of Franklin Stanley LLC. I'm the founder of Embrace Birth Care. Embrace Birth Care has served Ferguson Falls for six years. It's a small independent home birth midwifery practice. We support about 35 to 50 births annually and currently we only serve families in their homes for birth. Today, I'm requesting a conditional use permit on the property of 124 West Oriole to establish a freestanding birthing center. In Minnesota, such centers are regulated and licensed by the Department of Health. State statutes defines a birth center as a facility licensed for primary purpose of performing low-risk deliveries that is not a hospital or, or licensed as part of a hospital where births are planned to occur away from a mother's usual residence following a low-risk pregnancy. Currently, four freestanding birth centers exist within the state and they all reside within traditional residential neighborhoods. River Valley Birth Center in St. Peters, Minnesota, Minnesota Birth Center, two locations in Minneapolis, and Twin City Birth Center in Minneapolis. So I'm not the first to be asking to be placing a freestanding birth center within a residential community. The appeal to this property is the neighborhood offers a home-like setting, a safe environment. Our goal, our primary clients are families, women, children. So it is important for a home-like environment, a safe environment. It's also especially important for our rural families, like our farming communities that want out-of-hospital midwifery care, but are not at a safe distance to a hospital. want out-of-hospital midwifery care, but are not at a safe distance to a hospital within Like I said before, I empathize with the desire to maintain it as a single-family in nature for the neighborhood. However, Embrace Birth Care, we cater, like I said, to families, low-risk women, and we just want to complement the neighborhood and keep safety standards and have family-centered activities maintained in the neighborhood. Day-to-day operations would be Monday through Thursday. So to clear up some of the questions that you had, is this a clinic? Is it a birth center? Typically, birth centers, they do have clinic. They see the mother's pre-pregnancy throughout their prenatal care. Then mothers can choose whether or not they birth at home or within the facility itself. Then families will be seen a few times in their homes post-baby and then brought back for two primary visits to finalize care for baby and mother. It's kind of a two-separate transitional thought because right now, I solely only do home birth where I see people for clinical care and then they birth in their homes. What I'm trying to do is find a home-like setting in nature to expand services and offer a birth center space for the community. If someone lives in an apartment or they live on a farm and they're too rural and they need to be closer to higher-level care settings, but they are starting at low risk. And so there is a transition of, yes, we would be seeing families for their prenatal care on a day-to-day Monday through Thursday and then not seen for clinic care Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And then birthing mothers and families are able to come and go as birth happens. I do own another property in town. I own 1505 West Lincoln, which is a commercial space. Unfortunately, that space financially is not in alignment what we can develop into a birthing center for use. The cost would just supersede what our budget is. This current property, the thought would be to, all I had thought, it would be nice to split, to keep harmony in the neighborhood is we would start by seeing mothers and babies in a clinical setting at the Oriole property and do births and, and as we expand, renovate the Lincoln property to be our clinical site and only births at the Oriole site eventually. Does that make sense? In terms of parking, this is actually aerial shot from yesterday that we took. If you zoom in on the property, there are five vehicles parked there and I did leave space so that we were not encroaching towards the street. And so there was the five vehicles that were asked. I didn't know at the last meeting if it was possible to park five vehicles, but now that we've parked five vehicles comfortably, I can see that it is possible. My preference is not to pour concrete up to the property line. I would rather keep it grass and not have to extend the drive to accommodate another vehicle because I know that that is a primary concern to one of the neighbors. Also with, I know there was like a privacy screening fence that was asked about. My thought is if I don't have to pour concrete and extend, the cars still stay behind the her driveway in the visual aspect, not encroaching on her property or her view. But privacy goes both ways, right? We have birthing and families coming in. And so privacy from our aspect too is really important. And so I'm not opposed to hearing out what, in terms of a condition of a privacy fence being put in for her comfort. My other thought on that though is that I would ask the council that if a condition of a privacy fence would be placed on us, that the Minnesota fence law be put into effect, meaning that there would be 50/50 cost-sharing to erect and maintain that fence. In terms of access parking, I know that they wanted no on-street parking maybe as a condition. I took another photo showing that four vehicles on Meadowlark, three to four, of what that would look like and not impeding on other people's driveways. What is your address? 122, 122 and 124 are the properties that would be mostly impacted of backing their vehicles in and out on a day-to-day basis if parked on Meadowlark.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we, we may have some more questions. We'll let, you're the property owner to...
Yes, and the house is right next door.
Please.
This has been a concern for us when that building was first built and my husband and I, or Gordon has passed away a few years ago, but we knew that this was kind of the thing that was going to happen because it's already changed, that building already changed ownership a couple of times. I had, when it was a assisted living, yes, I could go out in the backyard. We have the lot behind, we bought that. And I might stand there at the fence about 10 feet away and talk to a couple of the fellows and I made them chocolate chip cookies and things like that, no problem. But the problem, probably, my biggest problem is going to be, I'll probably only be in the house maybe another year or so. I'm old and would probably want to go to something smaller or move closer to the kids. But it is going to make a difference when I put that house up for sale, definitely. And we knew that at the very beginning and we just have to deal with it. But that, that's one of my concerns right now. I'm not against the idea, what they want to do. I had babies of my own and I've got grandkids and great-grandkids. It's not that problem. It's just probably a personal thing that I'll never get what my house is worth because of the way the location is. I think that's all I have to offer.
How about the issue of the fence? If, if they don't extend the pad of the driveway, is, is that, is the fence still an issue?
We've got a little rail fence there, but I just don't want to look at a bunch of cars out my window sitting in, you know, the area that's closest to my front yard. There's only, it's just exactly the legal distance. When I would go in the backyard and stand at, we've got a little rail fence there, if I stand at that fence, I could practically toss over, you know, something that's right exactly where, the least distance that you can have between, between. Like I was just saying, it's more when somebody looks at my, at the lot and the house, they're going to, they're going to question. I, I don't think I'll have, I, it's a very nice house. It's a brick house, it was, was built by Georgini many years ago. So anyway, that's all I can say right now about it. We'll see what happens.
Thank you. Please.
I just wanted to make a comment. I actually live across the street down...
If you, if you could, just, just for the record, sweet, for the minutes, could you just state your name so we have...
Oh, sure. My name is Ryan Rath. And as I said, I, I live across the street on Meadowlark. And I was previously a Realtor and had the, the listing for the property. And I, there were some folks that had come through the open house and, and I just wanted to, to say that some of the people that had come through and said they wanted to, to have this building as, as a possible drug home. As I stated, I live in the neighborhood right across the street. This is the best option, in my opinion. I have three daughters of my own and I do not want to see this as a drug home. I do not want to see this as an Amanda home. I do not want to see this as a rehabilitation home. I have, like I said, I have three daughters of my home, of my own and any idea of having anything like that in my neighborhood scares me. Two houses down from me, we have a daycare. We have a lot of traffic that comes in our house, in our neighborhood two times a day. We have had a lot of talk about traffic and people parking in the neighborhood. We have a lot of people parking in our neighborhood that are not on any sort of a driveway. Yes, it's temporary, however, it is still people coming in the neighborhood. They come, coming in the neighborhood several times a day for picking up children and, and whatnot. Prior to Synstalin going out of business, we had folks coming in the neighborhood for work because Synstalin headquarters is in our neighborhood as well. We had to call Synstalin several times because the, the maintenance guy had come into our neighborhood many times driving like a bad out of health. Excuse my language, however, that was how he was. My husband and I many times would complain about him. We called, they changed things. Now we have several buildings in our neighborhood that are sitting empty. So here we are, another building sitting empty. I would like to see something going into this building and it not just sitting empty. There are many buildings in Fergus Falls that are currently sitting empty and I would like to see this building having purpose and something being done with it. I can name two more buildings in our neighborhood who, that are currently sitting empty. And again, I would like to see something happening with this. We had Head Start in our neighborhood as well. That, that also went out of business. So we have buses coming in our neighborhood every single day. We have delivery trucks coming in our neighborhood every single day. We live in a neighborhood just like everybody else does. That's all I want to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, please feel free. And we'll come back to the council.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Trockus. I live at 122 West Meadowlark Lane, so right from where the cars were parking on the side. Both my husband and I are here. I think that this is a great use for the building. As Ryan said, it could be used for a lot worse things and it is for medical purposes, but I think it's important for people to understand that it's not going to be a clinic where there's hundreds of patients coming in and out all day long. It's one to two providers, you know, they're seeing patients, they're seeing them for an hour-long appointment, so they're not people coming every 15 minutes. And it's a small subsect. They don't see and do 20 births a month, you know, they're doing six to 10, maybe a couple more if they get bigger, but it's not going to be multiple cars coming and going every day. So I think that although traffic can be a problem, as Ryan said too, that, we used to walk our dog around the neighborhood when we moved in and there are cars lining the streets on both sides all the way around. So it's not new. There's cars all over and we don't get to tell them they can't park there. And then there is the daycare, which is coming and going, parking wrong ways on our side of the street in front of our house and we're okay with that. I mean, they're picking up their kids. It's not a big deal. They're not harming anything. So I just think it would be a really good thing for the neighborhood. It offers another option for women and birthing options in the community. So I think overall, it's a really good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, back to the council. Questions for the council? So we have a recommendation from the planning commission to issue the conditional use permit with the listed conditions that Claire mentioned. The additional one that I've heard was the fence, if, if the council wants to consider the fence as a additional condition, but, but somebody, what are your thoughts, Anthony?
Yeah, I can make the, I can make the resolution, then we can talk about it on...
Yeah. So the resolution as, as recommended from the planning commission?
Correct.
With those conditions, okay?
And I'll second it, but I got some questions.
Sounds good. Okay, go ahead.
You can go first and then I'll ask my questions.
This neighborhood I've walked through numerous times and I got a question for Claire. How many current group homes do we already have in that neighborhood?
I'm aware of at least one other.
Yeah, I think there's at least two. And then there was this and then whatever that business is down on the end. I agree with Ben that no matter what, this is already here and it really is not suitable for turning into a residential. My biggest concerns on this one are the parking issues and I'd like to look into this a little bit more as far as being able to work with the adjoining property owners. I've been in her home numerous times talking with her and, you know, if, if a fence is going to make this a little bit easier, because I'm looking at the front of this right now and they're talking about expanding this pad, I'm wondering why the pad can't go north and just create a large apron so the cars can pull in off the street? Because there is a really serious problem in this neighborhood as far as parking is concerned. And, you know, I'm not against this because it's got to be used for something and, but the point is, I'd like to look into it a little bit more as far as what we can do to make this more neighborhood-friendly with the parking issues and being able to work with the neighboring, you know, because it wasn't initially just an assisted living, you know, people would come and live there. But it is going to be run more like a business, so it would be nice, because I'm not totally with putting conditional use permit businesses as residential neighborhoods. But since this thing is already there, I would just like to see a little bit more working with the adjoining property owners on what's going to be able to make it more user-friendly for the people who live around it and then to be able to take care of these parking issues. So I mean, I would like to see some, you know, the conditions worked on a little bit more. But I'm not against the project, but I'd just like to be able to, the adjoining property owners to be able to voice their opinions a little bit more and us to listen.
Thanks, Brian. So clarification on the parking? The, the, the planning commission had a five, five off, five units of off-street parking? Was there, was, was there discussion on that or how did they arrive at that decision?
Yeah, so the number five came up because that is the amount of parking that the applicant is estimating would be there at any given time during clinic visits and then also during a birth. So the discussion was, well, do we think that we can get five off-street parking spots on the property within nine months of the CUP being issued? So, because we are in winter right now, you can't pour concrete very well when it's cold out. So we were going to give them a little bit of time to kind of figure out how they wanted to find those five spots. Another one of the options that was discussed and the wording of the condition as it's placed now does allow for this discussion to take place too, would be for the applicant to seek an encroachment agreement with the city that would allow them to park a little bit closer to the street should they need to. So there are a couple of different options to get those five spots, but like the applicant has said, they went yesterday and were able to get the number of cars onto the, onto the current driveway.
Sure. So, so is it agreed that nobody wants extra concrete if they don't have to, right? Like that's not good for the neighborhood, it costs money, like nobody wants concrete and there's going to be five. So if five is the number, then we can eliminate the idea of adding more concrete as a requirement, right?
Are you okay with that?
Yep.
I, I think I had a couple of things. Obviously, currently the way that the city ordinance are written, you know, technically we, we, we need to allow this to happen, you know, the, if we want to deny it, we have to have compelling argument and reason for doing so. So I think, you know, obviously, and we have to be reasonable with any conditions that we put on, that, you know, this is a new business and, you know, equally, we're meant to be somewhat of a business-friendly community. And, but I think it would be important to distinguish the difference between a birthing center and a maternity in that, you know, this is purely for somebody to give birth, from what I understand. It's not somewhere where a, a, a mother is going to stay post the birth... It's not somewhere where a, a, a mother is going to stay post the birth and be there for a while and have a lot of relatives and friends wanting to come and see the new, the new baby. So I think, you know, it, it will be a very short-term residency in, in the building. I think from, equally what I also understand is that many of the clients currently are not necessarily from Fergus Falls. They are people coming in from other communities. And I think, you know, again, we have to look at what is the economic impact of that to the city? And does that mean you take this time of year, somebody that's probably at that point of expecting is not going to risk staying an hour away? If there's a snowstorm, they're going to probably come to town and stay in a hotel and therefore they're going to eat here too. And I think, you know, from a proximity point of view, you know, we are close to Lake Region Hospital, so should there be anything untoward, and not that anybody wishes that on a, on a, a new couple, but, you know, there is facilities in Fergus to deal with, you know, something that, you know, complicates the, the giving of birth. I kind of understand obviously the request regarding a privacy fence. I kind of do think that that is not the, the world's craziest idea to ask for that. Because equally there is kind of a headlamp, you know, as people turn in and out. I also think that maybe, I know the city technically doesn't allow this, but, you know, to allow them to even put a second driveway in off Meadowlock, Meadow Lake Lock Lane, um, so that they could pull cars in and that maybe could be for staff parking. You know, that way then that would leave the entrance of Oriole Drive vacant so that should an ambulance need to attend the facility, you know, they could come in and, and do that. I think the signage at two foot by two foot probably is adequate. So that, you know, it doesn't need to be a neon lit sign. You know, it's, I know it's Christmas and we have a lot of flashing lights going around in Fergus, but, but those are for a special reason, that so Santa can find the house. But I don't think we need to do that. I think the people that are going to come to this facility will find it, you know, without kind of that too, too big a signage. And, and so I think we can make it work and I think we can, you know, look at kind of conditions that are reasonable for, for all parties.
So I think your resolution covers all that except for the fence?
Correct.
So would you like to amend your resolution to include the fence?
I, I can amend my resolution to include a, a privacy fence and a signage no greater than two by two. And, and I think likewise, I think, you know, you know, the, in the same sense that there was a nine-month provision for kind of five parking stalls or slots, I think, you know, if there is nine months to get a fence up as well would be more than adequate.
Great. So there's an amendment to the resolution. Are you all right with the amendment to include the fence? Thanks, Anthony. I know your question back there. We'll, we'll, we'll get to it.
Since the resolution included must apply by all applicable building codes and laws, I think that covers it as far as the signage question. I think adding the signage question to this is, uh, it, it doesn't apply.
I didn't think it did because Clara said that we could go two ways on the signage. It could either be a residential or it could be a
Clinic.
Clinic sign.
Right. But even the clinic sign wouldn't be any larger than the sign that's currently there, which is maybe two foot by four foot. So it's not like a difference between two by two and neon. It's a difference between this big and this big. So it's really not, in my view, worth putting into this resolution. That's the point I'm trying to make. I think that we could leave that one alone, deal with the signage thing on its own question when the time comes to approve a, a permit for that. I think your suggestion for a driveway on Meadowlark is a good one. And I think that they could look at, you know, applying for some type of variance or a, you know, encroachment agreement or whatever that would take to make that work. I think initially, you know, this is a small business which hopes to grow, there would likely not be that need. So us to put that any additional parking needs on this at this moment is kind of forcing them to spend for a future that hasn't happened yet. I think we could allow the business to grow and deal with those things as they come up. That would be how I would prefer to see that handled.
Thanks, Scott.
I think the parking is covered in the sense that they can get five, five cars on that now.
So if they want to bring back a
They want more parking, they have to come back.
They can come back and, and make an application. So as to the fence, Anne, I'm sure that you're, with the fence, I'm sure you were asking about your request for the Minnesota, that's what your question was? I'm assuming you were going to question the cost of the fence being split between the property owner?
Yes.
It's not in the resolution. I personally, you're not going to like my answer here, but I can't imagine making the neighbor pay for the fence with, in this circumstance, but if, if you feel differently.
No, I, I would agree. I think, I think, you know, as much as also it would be nice to, to have the neighbor share the cost of the fence, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's fair to do that. And the fence would only need to be, you know, the portion from the city property line to, you know, the site, the visual site of, of the house. It wouldn't have to go the whole way around. So.
I have a real fence now. You weren't figuring out if that would interfere with this, you may have to move some of that.
Just to play, or if I may, please, just to play devil's advocate, um, you know, it's not necessarily the business that's, that's saying, hey, we want a fence. It's, you know, it's the neighbor. So if it is purely up to the business, I'm guessing there probably wouldn't be a fence and therefore not the added expense. So just looking at from another point of view, asking to split that cost, an argument could be made in that way. I'm not saying I necessarily support one or the other. And then, you know, just kind of some of my general thoughts on the project. Last week I, I spoke to the homeowner in the neighborhood as well as the, the owner of the, the business. And, um, you know, both, both made good points and I guess, you know, my first question would be, you know, what, what was traffic like, you know, what was parking like when it was operating in its previous capacity? And is there reason to believe that that's going to increase over what was there before?
I would say that, that's why I wanted to have it clarified, because if they're actually using that for clinic, that's going to increase the parking. Because when it was assisted living, the residents couldn't have cars at the end. So they didn't have cars parked there, but they did have visitors and then of course the employees that were there. But this is totally different. This is going to be people coming for appointments. They don't live there. So they're going to have to drive there, go to the appointment, leave, there's going to be another car. And I don't know how many women they would have at the same time, if it's two or three. I don't know how big their business is going to grow. But if it's going to be used for the checkups of the mother, I had kids myself, so I know you have to go. And however big their business gets is going to affect how much car is going to be parking on the street. They have to have more employees than the five. But I, I'm looking at that thinking, if I'm the one at the front and I want to leave and go someplace, everybody's got to move their cars because you can't drive through there to go to Meadowlark Lane. That's on Marriott's property.
At, at this point though, that's pure speculation.
Right, right. And that's just it. We don't know how big this business will get.
Yeah, and I guess, Anne, I would, I would get your response to that as well, you know, what?
Yeah, um, currently, uh, St. Peters River Valley Birth Center, they do approximately four to eight births per month and they do their clinical care. They have two parking spaces in front of a garage and then two to three spaces in front of their property on the street. Appointments are an hour long. So women are coming not every 10 to 15 minutes as what you would see in a hospital setting, but they are coming hourly. Providers are generally in office, one provider a day. Okay, and so on rare occasions, say like for instance, a holiday week, we might have two providers in office seeing people so that we can get everybody in for holiday. But again, Monday through Thursday, and then we would stagger appointments.
And I think the solution of, you know, people parking on Meadowlark, you know, especially hearing from the residents that live right there and, and them saying that they're okay with that, um, you know, I think that's going to provide room for expandability, you know, for a while anyway.
Yeah.
Do these customers or patients, I shouldn't call them customers, do they come in the back door? How, how do they get, I mean, I, I guess I'm not sure if your front door is the one that I look at every day, that that's where your people will go in? If you're parked on Meadowlark Lane, you're on the opposite side of the door.
Well, and I, I don't think we need to get too into the weeds, you know, with that kind of thing right now. I, I understand what you're saying.
I actually, um, if I was on Google Maps in last winter, um, the prior property owner had a pathway plowed from the back door onto Meadowlark as if there was a second drive. And I'm assuming that was placed there for fire exiting and prevention and safety, but not actually used as a parking space. And so if we would have people parking on Meadowlark, we would probably have a pathway and an exit just as the prior tenants did.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, one of the, one of the lessons I've, I've learned during my time on the council is that, um, you know, we need to be careful to avoid setting a precedent. And in this case, if we impose extra parking restrictions on this project, are we going to have to impose extra parking restrictions or conditions on other projects going forward? And, and then I'll, I'll wrap up, but you know, I, I guess the way I look at it is, is if you look at all the possible future uses of this property, I think this is going to be the best one for the neighborhood. And, and, you know, personally, I, I feel like, you know, it, it could be a lot worse than this. And so therefore I'm, I'm inclined to support the resolution because of that, but I'd be curious to hear what the other council members have to say.
Thanks, Tom. Laura?
Anne, I guess I just had a couple of questions for you or some clarification. You had commented that your clinic services, once you get to, um, a, a specific growth, are going to be on the Lincoln location, correct?
Yes, um, so your concerns are valid and I'm trying to vision like what this will look like in three to five years and how do we handle the volume, right? And keep the neighborhood in harmonious state with also keeping privacy for birthing families? I don't know the exact volume and numbers at this time, what it would look like when we would be looking at transitioning to put clinic, um, in the Lincoln space. I feel like over the course of, you know, two to three years, I'm, my intent is still to continue to renovate and develop our commercial property on the Lincoln Center into offices. And so I'm hoping that we will be done with that renovation and prepared and ready for any extra volume at that time. I'm sorry, I don't have clear parameters around that. But just looking at other birthing facilities and how they operate and the volume that they provide and do and how many parking spaces they have, they're doing way more volume than I think I ever will probably get to with six parking spaces in an alley in Minneapolis, you know, and serving 20 to 30 births per month and clinic rotation in one site. But again, I'm trying to be foresight and thinking about the future in this neighborhood and the health of the community and what's best for everybody.
Thank you.
I have one question of you. On, on Monday through Thursday, when you're there, do you expect to have somebody coming in at eight o'clock all the way through hour after hour after hour? Or what do you expect your daily visits to be?
Yeah, our daily visits, uh, we usually open at nine AM as our first patient and they come, one patient per hour. With the exception to lunch, we take an hour lunch. And so yes, a mother will show up at, for a nine AM visit, one at 10 AM, 11, one, two, three and four, potentially sometimes five. Right now, we have 25 to 30 expecting mothers and our booking is three to four mothers a day, Monday through Thursday. We're not even full booking our appointments.
Thank you. Thanks. All right.
You, you know, I just wanted to clarify that fence should be obviously, you know, a six-foot-high fence covering the neighbor, the, the rear, rear view of 114 Oracle Lane. So I think if you look, and, and it's not clear on that, but the picket fence is kind of more or less in the center of that picture, but I think that, you know, looking at it, the fence should kind of go somewhat from the corner of this property to the, to that shed so that it would be that section so that nobody's going to see into the backyard of, of Oracle, of 114 Oracle.
Thanks, Anthony. Wendy, yeah, please.
The only reason I bring up the signage is because you can't see it on that picture, but there's posts from the previous sign and I don't know if it's black or white. I didn't go out and measure it, but I think those posts have to be removed because if she thought she was going to put a sign across that whole thing, then it's beyond the two foot, I can say.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that after you finish with the fencing. My intent was just to use the posts that were there and put in our sign where the prior, there you go, an example.
And it's way bigger than a two-foot fence, two by two. That, that shouldn't have been allowed to go in there either.
Well, I think the, the, the resolution that I understand, you, you did specifically say it two foot by two foot fence, which is, which is code for a sign. Sign, sorry. Two foot by two foot fence, which is coincides with our sign. Sorry.
Just have one more quick question for Anne. Have you looked into the pricing of the fence at all? Do you have a?
No, I have not looked into the price of fence. The other thing that I wanted to address is, uh, we did ask and request that the city go out and identify the pins for the property lines. And I was told that due to ice and snow, they were not able to indicate where the property lines were at this time.
I think in the motion, or in the resolution, Anthony mentioned nine months, so hopefully we'll find them within the next nine months.
Yeah, that would be great because I would like clarity on that as well.
They can't come back and see us, all right?
Can I, one clarifying thing when it comes to pins? Is it is not necessarily represented as the official property lines? You got to hire a surveyor to get that verified. But they certainly can find pins, but that doesn't necessarily, or they're placed accurately.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So we have a resolution. Everyone clear on the resolution? And there's amendment to the resolution that includes the fence and the two by, two by two sign? Everyone clear?
I have a question about the fence. I don't know why. Is there a, uh, is there a, a standard fence? You know, I mean, is there something dictating what this fence has to, you know, I just, I just don't want to, I'm just trying not to, you know, impose any extra costs on the business owner. Six foot?
It's a six-foot solid fence. So obviously a chain-linked fence won't do because that doesn't offer a lot of privacy. And, and likewise, if you, if we said plant shrubs, you could plant shrubs that are this big that could take, you know, 400 years to grow, so.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, I'm just looking at it from the perspective of not, you know, burdening the, the business owner with a lot of, you know, all of a sudden that she's got $120,000 tab for a fence. I don't, I don't know what fences cost. So that's just, that's the reason I'm raising the concern.
And I think that's why I'm saying it's got to be that rear portion, not the entire length.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Everyone clear?
Yep.
Roll call, please.
I am anyway.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Bobby.
Yes.
Our resolution is approved. Thanks, everyone. I have number two as a resolution approving the, uh, no, we already did that one. I have number three as a resolution approving more engineering propose, proposal for roadway infrastructure planning. We'll call on Andrew Bremstad.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, council members. At the November 6th, 2023 meeting, uh, the council voted to postpone action on franchise fees so staff could look into it further and evaluate a few different options, bringing back various scenarios for the council to consider. And as a tax levy committee, we continued to meet on this topic as we developed the final version of the budget. And what the, the tax levy committee ultimately is recommending to all of you this evening is to engage the services of more engineering, um, third party to help us develop a comprehensive strategy for roadway infrastructure improvements. And really, um, what that means is helping us tie together a couple of different things. One, our CIP, our Capital Improvement Plan. Two, all the various road funding sources that exist today, the potential of franchise fees and also the potential of other grants related to road improvements. And then finally, understanding how that all correlates with the utility rates. and the impact to utility rates as we determine how aggressive we want to be on street reconstruction and improvement projects over the next handful of years. Um, so with that in mind, tying all those things together, uh, Moore is going to really dig in and create kind of a financial model that will help us create different scenarios for the public and the council to understand, um, as it relates to, you know, implementing franchise fees, not implementing franchise fees, what a certain level of a franchise fee may mean, and, uh, you know, multiple scenarios. As part of their work, they will host a open house with the public to ensure that the public understands what is, uh, being discussed. And ultimately, um, we'll create some content, including a video that explains and lays out a five-to-10-year comprehensive, um, street plan for the city of Fergus Falls. So, uh, their, uh, fee is $12,000 all-in to do those services. They are, uh, going to start right away upon, uh, the council's approval, should the council approve this. And, uh, that $12,000 will be divided out over several funds, including our utility funds, as we mentioned. A portion of this work is related to the utility rates and, and those studies. Um, this is not committing us to doing franchise fees or moving forward with franchise fees in any way. This is simply evaluating what that may look like. And frankly, even if this process leads to a point where franchise fees are not involved in any way, there's value in this process as we have a, a good plan that we can show and communicate to the public what the street improvements look like over the next five to 10 years. And also, uh, in discussing this with, uh, Finance Director Son, where there's always value in having another set of eyes on some of our projections, our, um, rate analysis and some of those things. So this is kind of all-encompassing. It ties a lot of different things together and I think is really the next step in having a good, educated and robust decision, um, as it pertains to franchise fees. So beyond that, uh, third set of eyes, also just, uh, working internally to determine whether or not we have the, um, capacity from a scheduling standpoint. We, we all kind of said, um, you know, we, we do need the help of a third party from a, just a workload perspective to get this done in a timely manner for the council. Uh, the last thing I'll say, Your Honor, council members, is that we did meet with two different, uh, companies, Moore Engineering and AE2S. Moore Engineering is local to Fergus Falls. We have a very good relationship with them. The, uh, other proposal was significantly more expensive. That all-in cost was $28,800. Again, we're looking at 12,000 with Moore. So really a competitive proposal, I think, that, um, gets us moving in a relatively quick time period. So that's, uh, that's the discussion before you this evening. And ultimately, um, I would ask that if the council's on board to, uh, approve the proposal and let the mayor and city administrator, uh, sign the engagement letter and get moving.
Thanks. Thanks, Andrew. Someone like to, uh?
I'll offer the resolution.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Second from?
Or Laura.
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 Yeah, sorry, I've talked too much.
Questions for Andrew of the Tax Levy Committee? Yeah, Laura.
You know, I just want to say one piece that, um, Andrew had mentioned was the, um, looking into the grants and really what is, um, available to us is a big piece.
Yeah, there's a significant amount of money available out there and working with those, and access those funds.
Oh, Jim wants to go next.
Go, Jim.
I think we all know that Brian is not going to have time to do that. He's got some big projects going on this next year and this will definitely help us find grant money out there. So I think it's a good proposal.
Thanks, Jim.
And, and that's basically, I mean, I think Moore is a good choice. Um, we, you know, some of us went to the county, kind of where more, county meeting on, on road funding, where more presented. And I think they, they have a good handle on what's, what's available and the type of, there's so many different funds, grants, ways that you can apply for, but you have to have the certain, a certain type of road scenario to be able, eligible for that. And I think, I think Moore's a good choi, good choice.
Yeah, and they're also local. They drive on these roads, they know the roads, they know the conversations that we've had as a council, as a community. All right, thanks, Anthony, Jim, Laura. Any other questions?
Nope.
Roll call, please.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Yes. That resolution is approved. Uh, item number four is a resolution naming the Aquatics Center. Andrew?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, council members. This is maybe a, a little bit of a fun topic, but, uh, we're getting to the point now where the contractors are finalizing and ordering material and need to know what the name of the facility is going to be. So, um, we had a little fun with it and invited the community to take part in a poll. The, uh, task force that's been associated with this project for many years came up with five options for consideration, um, just knowing that we have to start somewhere. And, uh, those five options were put to a vote over a period of time. We received 329 responses. For, uh, 94% of those were residents. And, uh, a couple of them were pretty close, but the top two vote-getters were the Fergus Falls Aquatics Center with 110 votes, and then Fergus Falls Community Pool was in second with 94 votes. The others had significantly less. Um, I will note that, um, the intention is that the park will remain Roosevelt Park. This would just be located within Roosevelt Park. And, um, the reason we need a name is so we can order s, uh, letters and signage for the side of the building and, and get things going. Um, so ultimately, it's up to the council, but that we'd have a little bit of fun with that, get the community engaged, and, and those were the results that we saw. So you are all free to, uh, accept those or?
Give us the other, give us the other three.
Yeah, so Fergus Falls Aquatic Park had 37 votes. As I mentioned, Fergus Falls Aquatics Center had 110. Fergus Falls Community Pool, 94. Roosevelt Park Pool, 45. Roosevelt Park Community Pool, 42. So, um, you can accept one of those or you can go in a whole different direction if that's your desire. But we thought we would help you out and, and give you a starting point to launch from.
How about the Bremseth Aquatics?
No, thanks. No. All right, you don't have options. This is.
You pulled it, the people's pool.
What are the wishes of the council? Scott?
I think that if it were up to me, I would have chosen the name Fergus Falls Community Pool. Now, I re, realize that the Aquatics Center got the most votes. Uh, I guess the rationale that I would have here is Aquatics Center, to me, encompasses maybe more than a pool. It sounds like it might be a competitive place, you know, like a, uh, place where there'd be swim meets and stuff, which this won't be. Aquatics Center also could possibly be something that's not a pool. It could be a lake, it could be a river. And it could even be something that's like an entertainment venue, like a, you know, Marineland. I mean, those kinds of things are possibilities when you hear Aquatics Center. And yet, there's Aquatics Centers all over Minnesota. You can look in, just Google Aquatics Center, and there's lots of towns that have, you know, town name Aquatics Center. So it's not that this is wrong if we went with the top vote-getter. I just think it maybe isn't as good as it could be if it was Community Pool. But, uh, I'm willing to go with, uh, with what the majority has selected here. Uh, I think it's a fairly small, uh, representation of the votes and people in town, but it, I guess it shows who's interested and who really doesn't care. And I'll leave it at that.
I do like the aspect of having community in the name. For whatever that's worth.
The people's pool.
People's Community Pool.
The workers' pool. Um, okay, well, it's just, so just for the record, I like Fergus Falls Aquatic Park, but nobody else seems to keep their voters like that, so whatever.
We can always hyphenate.
Yeah.
But it's, it's out there. Who's going to make the, who is going to make the?
I would make the resolution or a motion that we accept Fergus Falls Aquatics Center.
There you go, there it is, that's.
I would second that.
No, it's out there.
Who are we to argue the will of the people?
Yeah.
They've spoken.
And, and my logic is because it's two less centers than community, so I'm looking after the budget.
Yeah, yeah, we got to think about the per-letter cost here, so.
Less, less letters.
Yep, nice.
All right, roll call, please.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson. Yes.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes. That resolution is approved. Uh, item number five is a resolution approving economic development and facade loans to over, uh, I'm sorry, Otterland LLC doing business as Stella's, as recommended by the Business Development for Fergus Falls.
Yes, thank you.
Evening again, Clara.
Good evening. I think it's maybe been a little while since you've, um, had a loan in front of you, but as a reminder, Business Development for Fergus Falls is a board that is made up of community members and, yes, a couple bankers who look at requests for funding that come in from various businesses. We have several revolving loan funds, which can, um, go out and help support different business activities. In this case, what the request has been is to do some renovations to the old spot building. Um, they'll be fixing up the kitchen area and I think changing the bathrooms around a little bit to make it a little bit more streamlined and modernized. Uh, and then also using one of our loans for some signage. But the exciting thing is that we are looking at having a new restaurant downtown. So most people are familiar with Stella's in Battle Lake. Otterland LLC is the owner of Stella's, um, and they would like to come here to downtown Fergus Falls. So the request is from them. They have provided Business Development for Fergus Falls with their financials and also with, um, projections of what it will look like to open this new facility. Uh, they are expecting, because it's a smaller footprint than their store in Battle Lake, that it, they won't need quite as many staff members. Um, the idea would be that the Fergus Falls location is open year-round and the Battle Lake one would be seasonal. So Business Development for Fergus Falls discussed this over two meetings. Um, they didn't make a decision at the first meeting simply because they wanted to see some of the projections. Um, we now have those on file and they felt good about what they saw. So the meeting that they had, um, last week was very quick and they approved the, the loan unanimously. And now it's in front of you for any further questions or to approve.
Thanks, Clara.
I would offer the resolution to.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you, Scott.
I'd just add to what Clara said, that obviously this is, you know, um, supported by the board unanimously and, uh, obviously we have personal guarantees. You know, this is a building that currently is downtown and vacant. And, uh, Loreno's, uh, also supportive of the loan and, and in the similar way that we did the agreement before. For, um, uh, TC Foods, you know, where they went into a, a rented building, it's basically the same scenario. And, uh, this will support the activities of trying to, you know, bring, you know, life to downtown Fergus Falls.
Absolutely. Thanks, Anthony, thanks to the Fergus Falls Business Development. Clara, thank you. Uh, roll call, please.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes. That resolution is approved. Uh, tonight we have claims in the amount of $2,429,290.
Resolution for historic tax credits.
Yes, we do. Of course, one.
That's why Clara didn't.
Sorry, resolution of support for Historic Tax Credit Growth and Opportunity Acts and the authorized, the submission as requested by the Fergus Falls Heritage Preservation Commission. Clara?
Yeah, so historic tax credits, um, can be a big boon to projects that are locally and nationally registered. Um, the federal program has not been, been looked at since about 1986, I believe, is what I was told when I had a phone call regarding this. Um, there is a bill that has been put forward that would make some changes to the federal program that would make it easier to use and modernize it a little bit. Uh, the request that has come in to, from the Historic Preservation Commission is for council to send a resolution of support to, uh, Congresswoman Fishbox's office. She is on the tax writing committee and, um, could help offer some support for this at the federal level, which is what the Historic Preservation Commission is interested in seeing happen.
Thanks, Clara. We can do, we can accomplish that by resolution of support. Scott? I'll offer that. Would you like to offer? Thank you, Scott. Second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Anthony. Question, go ahead, Anthony.
Um, do we know where the state is at in terms of historic tax credits?
They're back in place. They did, they did reinstate them, yep.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Roll call, please.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Thompson.
Yes.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Yes. Resolution is approved. Barely. Now we're back to the claims in the amount of $2,429,290.58. If there's any questions, we'll direct them to our Finance Director.
I'll offer the resolution, pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim. Want to second?
Defer to Laura.
I'll second.
Thank you, Laura. Roll call, please.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson. Yes.
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 Joe.
Yes.
Yes. That resolution is approved under Board Committee and Department reports. Uh, you have a list of 2,024 boards and commissions in your packets. Um, because there's a seventh-grade choir concert site, I'm not going to read all of the appointments, but I would just make a couple notes. Uh, first of all, thanks to all the people that serve on the boards and commissions. If you're interested as a public and serving on those boards and commissions, get an application to Lynn. Um, there are a number of new members that we're appointing this evening, so we'd like to welcome them and say thank you for that. Uh, there are two opportunities that currently have openings, two, two boards and commissions. The first is the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Second is the Human Rights Commission. Both have, um, and I'm sorry, the Heritage Preservation, not the Human Rights, it's the Heritage Preservation Commission. Sorry. Um, so if, if anyone in the public is interested in serving on those, um, we would welcome you to submit an application to Lynn. And then I'd just make mention, there is a new committee on there. It's an ad hoc, it's, it's a housing task force that we're going to put together specifically to look at a few areas, but, um, it, it is, will be ad hoc. I don't, it's, that will go on indefinitely, but with the grant application to the Energy Transition Communities Grant that we applied for, um, the pending purchase agreement based upon that grant. We're going to look at a multifamily housing project on that site. We're asking that, um, that community expert, uh, expertise within the community on that task force. Uh, Council Member, Member Hicks is on there as well as Clara. Um, so, uh, also look at extending utilities to the Norgren property for single-family housing. So that's another priority in that group. And then, of course, um, working with the county to make sure that the city has access to all of the housing funds that are available to other cities in the community, or in the county, I'm sorry. So with that, uh, would someone like to make a motion that we approve those appointments to the 2,024 boards and commissions?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Laura.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Brent, any questions? All favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Uh, under old business, we have one item this evening, and that is the golf course contract negotiation update. Both Scott and Anthony participated in conversations with members of the golf board earlier, so I'll turn it over to the two of you. Scott?
Okay. Uh, at our last meeting, uh, we had a resolution that directed the council to get together with the golf course board. And we had offered a one-year extension with a RFP process in the summer next year ahead and all that. And, uh, after meeting with them, it became pretty clear pretty quickly that to try and hash out the details of this before the end of the year was going to be just too tight of a timeframe. In reviewing the current contract language, it was clear that there is a holdover paragraph or statement in there. And so that, you know, do, as we come to the end of the year and the current contract technically expires, we can continue to operate on a month-by-month basis without making any changes until we're ready to make changes. And, uh, there will be some changes that would need to be made uh, in order to even continue into the spring and summer with the current arrangement. And yet, it seemed the best way to go was to just establish a working relationship, get started on trying to work out a couple of paragraphs of some details in the current contract. And then once we have that, we can come back in January, hopefully, maybe February if it takes a little longer. But then, uh, settle those questions, establish that one-year deal, establish that one-year deal and then still look forward to doing an RFP in the summer, as we were asked to do. And so that's as much as I can encapsulate for you there, I think. Any questions?
Thanks, Scott.
I think I'd just add that we also would look to try to get some clarity from the council as to what the council collectively would like to see out of a relationship with whoever manages the golf board, the golf course. And so we probably look at then setting up a kind of a work session, either on Wednesday morning or kind of pre a council meeting, just to talk about that. But once we got a little bit more detail out of the current Pebble Lake Golf Board, then it'll be easier to kind of, for Scott and I to facilitate that kind of conversation over what it was, obviously, the other day. And, and I would say that the meeting that we had today was cordial and was professional and went, was, was a lot different than two weeks ago.
Thanks, Anthony. Thanks, Scott.
And just for the record, the members of this six-person committee that met today